I'll call the July 21st special meeting of the city council. We've got one item on our agenda, that's Agenda Bill 7035, Old Town Terrain Walk. That will be a presentation of Old Town, the Old Town Vitality Goal, the Old Town Vitality Task Force update, and then our walk, which will not be televised. And then we will return back here for final observations, and that portion of the council meeting will be televised. This special meeting focuses on Old Town and provides the council an opportunity to discuss current vitality efforts, as well as the future of Old Town with the mayor's Old Town Vitality Task Force and the Downtown Issaquah Association, who are here and will be walking with us and serving as guides as we take our tour. The public is invited to accompany us on the terrain walk of the Central Business District. Our first stopping point will be Pedestrian Park at the corner of Sunset and Front, and there we will discuss potential changes to the park, and perhaps how to invest the $20,000 the council has set aside for the park this year. Staff will be seeking feedback from the council on these ideas at that time. The tour will then proceed down Front Street, and each task force member will pair up with a council member to highlight specific observations and themes that the task force has discovered. Our next stop will be at the Historic Shell Station, where Dia will present on their efforts to add vibrancy to that space. Finally, as I mentioned before, we will return via the Rainier Trail to Council Chambers, where there will be an opportunity to discuss final thoughts and observations. And to kick the meeting off this evening, our Economic Development Director Keith Niven for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Keith Niven with Economic Development. So, this evening, we're not going to spend much time here, because the point is really to get out and see some things and talk about kind of what's going on downtown, but I wanted to just kind of give a little bit of context. So, the city approved the Old Town Plan in October of 1999, and here's the geography that encompasses Old Town. And, you know, the plan itself has some very different design standards and development standards for the Old Town and the CBD area of our city, and the idea was that this area should stand out and be different perceptually from the rest of the city. And so, you know, as we went through the 2014 goal-setting session, there were a number of goals that were proposed by the city council that were aimed at the Old Town area, and here's a list of those proposed goals. Now, after we talked through those with the council, we kind of came to an understanding that we would consolidate those into one city council goal, and that was to enhance Old Town vitality. Now, that goal had really two actions associated with it. The first one was to identify and execute an immediate public investment opportunity for Old Town that will help enhance the Old Town's vitality. And we'll talk about that tonight, and I think that's part of the conversation that we're going to have at Pedestrian Park. And the second part is to form an ad hoc committee to provide recommendations to the mayor and what the community can do to enhance Old Town's vitality. And that's kind of the balance of the conversation this evening, is to kind of talk with you about how the conversations have been going so far. So, with that, I'm going to stop, and I'm going to turn it over to Andrea, who is going to, I think, lead you through the next part of the conversation.
Thank you, Keith. So, I'd just like to give you an update on what the task force has been doing so far. First, starting off with an introduction of the task force members, who, many of whom, are here tonight, so we'll start with who's here. First, Karen Donovan with the Downtown Issaquah Association, and also Keith Watts, who's a commercial downtown property owner. Also, I'm going to pick on Cyrus, who just joined us. Cyrus Crone. Cyrus Crone is serving as a representative for the Chamber of Commerce on our task force, and he's also a downtown resident. We have Todd Sargent, who is the city's representative on the Historic Landmarking Committee, and he's also affiliated with the History Museums and is an architect, so he brings those skills and perspectives with him to the task force. Michelle Druvda, who manages the Issaquah Library. Karen Abel with Art East. And I'm just making sure I'm not forgetting anyone else who maybe has snuck in. All right, the other members who were not able to make it include Cory Walters with the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank, and she's also a downtown resident. Trey Bailey with Uphill Running, which is a store in the Front Street Plaza area, and he's also a downtown resident. And Barack Rosenbloom, who's a member of Dia, and he is an Issaquah entrepreneur and also a downtown resident. And then finally, but not least, we have Rob Hunt, who is, of course, the director of the Village Theater, also a commercial downtown property owner, and he has been involved in previous Old Town planning efforts, so he brings with him that historical perspective as well. So, as you can see, we have a wide representation of all sorts of stakeholders within the downtown area. And I've been saying downtown, because while the goal is related to Old Town, and Keith showed that big Old Town map, which is actually a bigger area than many of us realize, we've been really focusing on the CBD. So, the process so far has included walking audits that the task force has performed. We've also taken a look at what other cities have done, so what do we like about these other cities? What do we think might work here in Issaquah, and what would that look like here in Issaquah? They've performed their own version of a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis, and we've also taken some look at the existing city code that governs Old Town and the CBD, and how it relates to city code in other parts of the city, such as the newly adopted Central Issaquah Plan, or the Highlands, or other parts of our So, one of the first questions that we had to ask was, what is vitality? So, as the goal is defined, their charter, the task force's charter is to give the mayor a list of recommendations on things the committee can, the community can do to enhance Old Town vitality. So, what is vitality? What does it mean to this group? What does it mean for downtown Issaquah? And the first thing that we talked about were all these images that come to mind about what vitality is. So, we talked about images that include, you know, lots of outdoor public spaces, people sitting in cafes, people having coffee, playing games, interacting on that level, local stores that serve the community needs, and this is, they really emphasize this point, that it's a functional downtown, one that serves the community that it's in, that it's not a Leavenworth, or a Disney, or something like that, that's more focused on tourists and serving tourists, but that it's authentic in the way that it serves the local community first, and that if they do that really well, then the tourists and others will come and appreciate it in the same way that the locals will. So, if you hear that word "authentic" being thrown around a lot tonight, that's what we really mean by that word, something that serves the local community first. Also, when we talked about vitality, there were other images that came up of it being walkable, that we have transit, that there's more housing than what we have now, that there's parking, that it's safe, that it's well-lit, all of these kind of images of what that looks like came up. But with that focus, that it's still functional and well-designed. So, what all of these things kind of distilled down to, these are a lot of images, and what all of these things distilled down to for the task force was that vitality really, for vitality's sake, doesn't mean much, but what it really means is that it's facilitating interactions among neighbors, and that if, that that's our guidepost for this process. So, any recommendations that they come up with, any discussions that we have, we say, how is this facilitating these interactions? How are these recommendations helping us keep that town feel that we are having these interactions, and that's what really brings vibrancy and vitality to our town? So, throughout our discussions, we've had some emerging themes, and so I'd like to present some of those findings, and I think along the tour and the walk, we will probably get into those a little bit more specifically, but keeping it a little more higher level. We found that first, design, that the existing design of much of our CBD can actually be a barrier to facilitating those interactions. So, for example, right now, the sidewalk in some places is six feet wide, which doesn't allow for street furniture or places for people to linger. It instead ushers people on through, giving them no other options than to move along and go along their way, so, which is really sending the wrong message. Our downtown, one of the findings of the task force, is that our downtown is one where people really run their errands. They drop off their kids for music lessons, they go pick up what they need from Fisher's Meats, and then they're on their way. So, the space isn't really designed in many parts of our CBD, at least. The space really isn't designed to compel them to stay and linger and enjoy those interactions with their neighbors. It doesn't send them the message that there's a reason to do that. And while that's functional to do your errands, it doesn't fill other needs for social interactions. Similarly, another theme that we've found is underutilized spaces, and some of these spaces are places where we could have those social needs that are met, where people could linger. So, you see this picture of Pedestrian Park, for example. We're a growing community and such a small downtown, and yet there are these spaces that could be adding to the vibrancy and vitality, but are just kind of sitting there. So, we'll be visiting two of these spaces tonight that are currently, or the task force finds that are currently underutilized, which are Pedestrian Park and the Historic Shell Station. But along the tour, I bet you can probably spot a few more areas that are tucked away here and there, that could probably do more to add to the vibrancy of the downtown. So, as you're walking around tonight, I want you to look around and think of the messages that the current design and aesthetics are sending, and ultimately, how that affects the neighbors and how they interact within that space. Task force members, feel free to talk with council and others about what we have been discussing in our meetings, and how a few changes could affect how we use the space, and what you feel the benefits to the community would be if those changes are made, because I think that's what tonight is really all about. Before we go on our walk, are there any questions?
Andrea? Could you just remind us, the CBD, the Cultural Business District, what, just remind us, you know, how that exists, what form it exists, what, you know, when I see the word district and people see the word district, that usually has some meaning to it, and I know that there are certain design standards and the like, but could you just summarize the district and how, what it's supposed to achieve, and how we should keep that in context as we go through this evening?
Sure, sure. So, most other cities have what they call a commercial business district. Issaquah is distinctive in that we've established a cultural business district, and that's because we have a great concentration of arts and other cultural amenities within our downtown area. So, obviously, that's the Village Theater, that's first stage, but we also have a lot of other historical amenities as well, and so, and knowing that we have a historical downtown and wanting to celebrate that as well. Is that getting to what your question is?
So, it's really just a description of an area. I mean, there's, you know, I know that we have a sub-area.
Are you looking for a map? I think I might have one at the end of this.
I'm looking at Keith's map.
So, here's the, here's one of our zoning maps. The CBD is in the dark red. So, you can see at the top, it's defined in northwest Holly Street, that would be to the north, and then the south border would be southeast Bush Street, and then there's some spots along Sunset Way. So, it's defined geographically, and it's kind of a geographic zone?
So, in a way, it's similar to the CIP, in that the CIP has the core zone, which is kind of the most active portion of the Central Issaquah area, and so, within the Old Town area, the CBD zone is envisioned to be the most active portion of this sub-area.
And there are special land use zoning or other?
Like building heights and character development standards that are attributable to that zone.
Okay, thank you. Mary Lou?
A question about private and public spaces. So, I assume one of our exercises tonight is that we're kind of imagining or envisioning how to activate some of the spaces. What is currently allowed, for example, for restaurants and bars? The space that they occupy now in front of them is permitted by the city, or it's their space? Like, I'm trying to figure out, when we walk through Pedestrian Park, how that might connect to those private businesses that are there?
Yes, that's a great question, and some of those conversations we can have in context, because it might differ on where we are, but I'm going to give you a general answer. So, general answer is that where there's sidewalk, that's typically city right-of-way, and that is currently governed by a special use permit. So, if there is enough space that, then businesses could put out outdoor seating, and so you see some of this in front of Lost Margaritas, for example, or some of the other businesses have some outdoor seating that's there along the sidewalk, and they have to apply for special use permit to do that every year. They also would have to comply with special regulations to make sure there's enough room for ADA clearance and things like that. So, I think there might be, we've been taking a look at that with the task force, and thinking, how can we make it easier for private businesses to take advantage of some of that space, and maybe bring more activity to that space and invest into it a little bit? So, I think we can talk about that more within the context of our walking tour.
Okay, thanks.
So, we'll have an opportunity after the walking tour to meet back here, to talk about what we saw, and there may be a number of follow-up questions or things like that, but it's such a beautiful evening, and there's a lot going on in our city this evening, that we're going to recess from the council chambers, go on our walking tour, and return, and that part of the meeting will be televised. So, we are now recessed for the walking tour.
We have a few more meetings left to go, and in those next meetings, we'll be forming recommendations that speak to the themes that we've been talking about this evening. And we'll also be examining partnerships among the community to look at programming, like we discussed, and how we can activate some of these spaces downtown. We also want to come up with a really thoughtful list of recommendations. So, we don't want to give the mayor a laundry list of things, 105 things that, ways that we can enhance downtown vitality. We want them to be well-thought-out, we want them to be vetted, we want them to also identify who's responsible for these things, because it's a list of things the community can do, it's not just what the city can do. So, we want to be able to identify those partners and get some partners on board. We also want to have an idea of what these costs are, we want to be realistic and grounded in these recommendations. So, I think we still have some more process to go through before we come back to you, and our deadline is the end of the year, and I think we're on board, on track, and meeting that deadline, we're doing pretty well. So, those are the basic next steps in wondering, you know, what's next. I think we still have a few more things to do and a few more meetings to have. Any questions about the task force and next steps, before we move on to synthesizing thoughts from our walkabout?
Mary Lou?
Just one thing, Andrea, that I was talking with Keith Watts about when we were, I think it was Keith, maybe, can't remember, we were walking, was that we didn't talk a lot about Sunset today, and one of the council members who sponsored this goal, and it isn't here this evening, is Nina Milligan, and one of her areas of interest was to understand how Sunset would be integrated into it. So, not asking for an answer tonight, but just making sure when you come back that, you know, there's, that that's discussed, as much as you have discussed it with your group, because that was very important to her.
Yes, yes, thank you. I think initially, at the beginning of this year, when we put the focus on the CBD, at that time, the conversations about Sunset and her wishes for that goal were more absorbed into the Master Mobility Plan, but as those changes have occurred, I think what we're looking at is, there will be some recommendations for perhaps an Old Town Plan, re-looking at the Old Town Plan, which incorporates Sunset, so I think we can probably address some of her concerns through that.
And I'm trying to recall whether there, the transportation survey that we recently completed, or getting the final report on, did that include a project on Sunset?
Yes.
Thank you. Other questions before we let Andrea sit down? Okay, well, thank you very, very much. We are back from our tour. It was exciting to be joined by the task force and to hear some of the good work that they are doing, and the projects that they are considering as they refine their recommendations of their report and submit it to the mayor. Discussion, observations, or comments as a result of our tour, and we'll start with Paul.
Thank you, then, thank you for the members of the task force and staff support. Very pleased with what we were able to achieve this evening. I had a couple of comments on some of the, Andrea, some of your opening comments. I've wondered for a long time what we meant by vitality, and what did that really mean, so I was pleased to see that you tackled that. And two words that stood out, authentic, I think that was the first word that you used was authentic, and I, that resonates with me very much, I like that. But then, the second mention, and I'm looking at my notes here, is that it, for it to be vital, to have vitality, that the goal, it should facilitate interactions among neighbors, I think I captured that. So, that sounds like something I would write, but, you know, that facilitates interactions, and when we were, so I like that a lot, it's what binds people together, right? It's what binds community members together, there's a place to gather of common interest where it's safe, and they enjoy being there. I really could feel a lot of that possibility more when we were in Pedestrian Park, the comments, so just, this is just, you know, high level, right? The comments I heard about creating, you know, maybe tables or places where people can gather, I see people use the shelter down at Confluence Park quite a bit. I have a garden in the pea patch down there, and there was always people coming and going, at least during the summer. So, this idea that we have places where people can say, I'll meet you there for a picnic, for example, I'm not sure that would happen at Confluence Park, but that, so that is a very attractive idea to me. And I want to echo what was said there as well, and Andrea, in your opening comments, you know, you talked about the arts and how we have this association, this cultural district has it associated with the arts, and I shared with some of you during the walk, that in my mind, I like to think about both the performing and visual arts. And when we were at Pedestrian Park as well, there was the mention, I think Tola maybe mentioned, someone asked the question, what about the opportunity to create more of a space where, you know, performances can take place, of performing arts? And I would just add, and I think Josh talked about some type of installation, and to me, to me, to celebrate and to create further attraction and continue this momentum of facilitating interactions, if a pedestrian park destination also had reminders of the performing and visual arts as part of its plan, and because that is so central to the identity and the attraction of downtown, I mean, I would look for those kind of elements in some type of long-range plan.
Thank you. Other comments or discussion reactions? Paula?
I'm just very excited about where we are right now as a city. I'll say, my own journey to arrive at Issaquah, the having the downtown that we have was one of the two factors why I moved here. I lived in a very pleasant, near the top of all the ratings in Minnesota, city that had no downtown. Its downtown was the mall, and so they shot off the fireworks from near the mall. And so, to have, to have what we have here was really deeply meaningful for me, and combine that with the school system, and that's why I'm here and not some other place. And I feel that, you know, I'm sure that the community has seen how many, that list of goals that were submitted for last year was just so formidable, there was so much that related to downtown, and I just feel we have, we have done a good job with the Central Issaquah Plan, and it now just feels like the time has arrived for us to put the focus to downtown, and so I, to Old Town, to downtown, here. And I think that tonight was a good jumping off point for that. There was a lot of things that I learned about the, forgive me, the gas station, I forget the name of it, but I had, I didn't know they used it for multiple purposes, I didn't know they had events there, and I think what I heard the most, that I was most excited about, was the collaboration between the different organizations, between Dia and the various organizations around, and I feel those collaborations will yield a lot of things that I'm hoping that we, as a council, are well-prepared to engage on. Thanks.
Other comments? Josh?
Thanks. So, first, I just want to thank all the folks who came tonight and joined us for the walking tour, and are still here for this portion of the meeting. I'm just constantly in awe of the commitment that folks have to not just Issaquah, but particularly the CBD, and just really, really impressed and amazed by the commitment and the enthusiasm that surrounds the work that's being done on Old Town and the vitality enhancements that we've really been striving for over the last several years. So, you know, the other day, we took a drive down south on Esquahobart Road, and just drove around for a while, because it's better to sit in the air conditioning, I suppose, and as we were coming back up on Front Street, entering into the city, I actually took a moment to look at downtown Issaquah from the perspective of someone who might be coming into it for the first time, or coming up from the south. And it was an interesting exercise, just to think about that for a moment, as you come up Front Street, and what are the first things that you see? And the first thing I noticed is that the 25 mile an hour, as you get into town, is a suggestion, and then you finally get up to Sunset, and you see the library, and you see the gas station, and you see the businesses beginning to proliferate on that corner, and it's a really welcoming entrance into the city. And, you know, if you looked at that corner at Front and Sunset, which has long been the heart of the city, you almost would have no idea about any other development that's going on in the rest of town, you know, or tall buildings, or, you know, intersection issues, or anything, you just sort of drive in and you look at it as just a historic part- You just sort of drive in and you look at it as, as just a historic part of the city. And I think it's, it's really a credit to everyone who's worked together to make it continue to be vibrant and look that way. There are still challenges. I mean, as we walked along, it was still apparent that getting people to these great locations is difficult. A lot of it has to do with the topography. Some of it has to do with parking availability, ingress and egress, and just making sure that there's enough spots for people who want to stop and partake in businesses, and partake in recreational opportunities. And, you know, a lot of folks use the library parking garage because that's the parking garage that's available and closest to a lot of the CBD. So it still is a challenge when it comes to issues like parking. And that's something that I think, since I've been on the council, has still really not been resolved or, or moved forward. And we did a parking study, and that seemed to suggest that there wasn't a problem, which conflicts with a lot of anecdotal evidence, I think you'd hear from folks around the city. But be that as it may. The other thing I, I would just say is there's a real big emphasis on, on art. And I think rightfully so, because it is really the center of the city when it comes to promoting the arts. And, you know, you look at all the art galleries and Art East, and just the, the confluence that we have of the arts community in the downtown core, and the opportunities that exist. And, you know, there's a lot of cities around the country that go, even in, in the details, one step further, you know, paint the garbage cans, paint the fire hydrants, paint the lamp posts. You know, do things that really bring out the vibrancy, add color, add lighting. There's other things, you know, little details that can be done that's more than just reconfiguring a space, but actually making it visually attractive for people who come downtown. And then the last thing is, and I talked with a few folks about this, but emphasizing the family-friendly nature of coming downtown. That, you know, even though we've got bars and potential beer gardens and pubs, still making it family-friendly, because we've got a library on the corridor. And we've got children who come to this area with their families. And we've got Memorial Field over here, where there's a lot of kids' activities. And so, you know, just finding ways that you can really emphasize the family-friendly nature. And it's, it's great to have colorful tables and sort of an adult hip atmosphere, you know, where you can go in the evening after you've had a glass of wine and dinner. But also look at the families that will come to downtown and spend time walking through this area, and making sure that we do something to promote interest for them as well. And so if there's ways that we can use art installations, active sculptures, that sort of thing, or just vibrant colors, activities, there's things that can be done that will really emphasize that as well. And so that was one thing that really stood out at me, is take into account the overall population and not just a subset in terms of future design.
You? Other observations or comments? Stacy?
Well, I want to echo the comments that I've heard so far about thanking the task force for all the wonderful work that you've done. It's, we had a, a really great presentation about the possibilities over at Pedestrian Park. And the simplicity of the ideas stand out. But to get to that point takes a lot of, a lot of thought and a lot of consideration about what could happen and what, what we might want to use that space for. And I thought it was, to borrow what Josh mentioned, the colorfulness of it, the, you know, the bistro sets, the lights. All of those things are, sound very simple. But the way that they might be able to transform the space is just super, super exciting. I, as I mentioned to a couple of people who were on the walk, I feel like I don't get out much sometimes. And so maybe one of these Tuesdays, we can have a, a tour of Concerts on the Green so that we can enjoy that. But, but, but it really was an opportunity for us to interact with a task force, which was planned, and I'm glad it was planned. It was an opportunity to meet with folks who have really done a lot of work downtown and really invested a lot of time downtown, and can give us very thoughtful feedback about what we could do down there. And so I'm deeply grateful for all of the time that you've put in.
Anyone else? Well, again, my thanks to the task force for being our guides and our leaders this evening, and for the work that you are involved in. I look forward to the completed recommendations. This has been very enjoyable. It's fun walking around our city in the evening, because you do see a lot of activity and a good cross-section. I talked to someone who was returning from the Concerts on the Green as we were returning to the council chamber. And she was a lady with a walker. And she said, "Neil Diamond was one of my favorite singers, along with ABBA when I was very, very young." So we indeed are appealing to a broad cross-section of our community. And with that, we are adjourned this evening.